Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the planning commission meeting, May 21st. We're having it a week early because of Memorial Day. Okay, first, next we have approval of the April 30th, 2018 minutes. And I want to thank you guys for jumping in. I could not make it due to a family emergency. But thank you so much for, Leslie, for taking over and you guys making that meeting happen.
I think the meeting, the minutes capture, you know, the essence and the detail of the discussion. You know, the, I've got some tweaks to it in terms of, you know, rhetoric and sentence construction and so forth, but, but yeah, I would, I would move to accept them.
Was there a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm abstaining since I did not attend that meeting. Okay, next we have citizens comments and these are for items that are not on the agenda. And so if you want to speak, just come up to the podium and give your name and address, please.
What would a meeting be without you?
I know, Carl, what would a meeting be without you? We have to have sunshine, so we have Carl.
Exactly. Carl Munder, 2002, Field Brook Lane, Mallory, Maryland. I just have a concern or a question or maybe something the planning commission can reach out to the other two counties that surround Mallory, particularly Howard County, Montgomery County. Because it seems to be like, it seems to be that at every meeting, the Frederick County planner, or representative of Frederick County Department of Planning and Carroll County Department of Planning show up if they have something new to report, to say. But I've yet to see anyone from Montgomery County or Howard County come and see what they're doing because...
In my 12 years on planning, I've never seen them.
Yeah, so it's like, I'm not sure if the invite has never been put out to them.
I'm sure it has, but they're, the majority of the land is in Frederick and Carroll County. That's why we, we have probably invited them in the past. Monica could probably answer that. But at this point in time, I don't think it's necessary.
There's a, that's really a second phase.
A second phase, because I'm seeing...
Of regional planning.
Because I'm seeing...
There are two of us, there are two of us that purposely raised our hand to be members of the Maryland Planning Commission Association Board. And one of the reasons we did that was because this body has understood for some time the critical need for regional planning in central Maryland.
Yeah.
Okay? And Mallory more so than anyone else, because we do have multiple jurisdictions.
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
So we are pushing that topic with both Maryland Department of Planning, with MPCA, where also, we've reinforced it already and we'll do it again, because we started this four, five, six years ago or longer, with Carroll and with Frederick. We have yet to see them really embrace that and start to deal with it.
It's just that the development of Woodbine and Lisbon in the Howard County side is picking up with the new developments of NV homes and then I saw...
Look what's happening around us.
And then there was an article in, I guess, local paper, Montgomery County, saying that they're looking at redesignating some farm use in the Agpres to make wineries and stuff. So it can, will impact us in the later, just be nice to catch up with Montgomery County and Howard County before it all of a sudden appears, so we can plan, because any development in Lisbon is going to affect the Twin Arch in a section more so than anywhere else.
Just to clarify one thing, there is no land in the town of Mallory that is Howard County.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
I know, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm sure that Carroll and Frederick came, come, oh, yeah, no, I'm aware of that, but it's nice to sense regional and everything outside can influence what happens in town.
And our economic development commission has a tagline for the area, and it's, we are the heart of four counties.
Yeah.
So we, we do recognize the fact that they're very important to us as a town.
I do think that that's not a bad idea. I do know in the Howard County Consolidated Plan, there's mention of properties out in the Woodbine and in Mallory as part of their future development, not in the town limits, but certainly in the town itself. So I don't think that's a bad idea to try to reach out and just try to get some ideas and just have the conversation, just have the dialogue with them. It's a great idea.
Carl, the other point about it is that, that the development all around us and all four of the counties that are adjacent to us, that's the context for the opportunity we have and why our economic development and our revitalization of downtown and our commercial sector is so critical. There's lots of opportunity out there. We give reason, people a reason to come and visit us and leave some money before they go back home.
Yeah. I know it's important, but I just don't want Mallory to be overwhelmed by or extra development out there if we're not planning and, if we're not aware of it, we can't plan for it and make sure it does help us economically too.
Smart.
Yeah.
Thanks, Carl.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Is there anyone else who would like to have a citizens comments for this evening? Okay, then next we'll go with the Carroll County Planner. I think, come on. I knew it was a substitute, so...
You don't look like a comas.
That's not a comas.
Right.
No comas cannot make it here this evening, so...
That's what I understood.
I'm Arco Sen, the new planner one for Carroll County, will be filling in for it tonight.
And your name, sir?
Arco Sen, A-R-C-O-S-E-N.
Okay, Arco, take it away.
Really, the only item to discuss this evening is the planning annual report that we put together each year. And I apologize if there was any confusion during the last meeting. I spent the next day trying to print out versions of Mallory's section of the report and I sent them out to Heather Smith and I think each planning commissioner should have received a copy.
They're in the packet.
There you go.
So it's required from the state that we put together the annual report each year. And the report itself features changes in development patterns, any subdivisions or site plans approved, changes to the comprehensive plans or planned elements adopted. And these development related patterns are to be consistent with our local adopted plans and state planning visions. And each town needs to put together information on the implementation status of their comp plan every five years, but Mallory does not need to do that this year. So you guys are okay. The only other thing is that there is an approval letter that needs to be signed and inserted in our report, so we can move forward with the process and send it out to the state as the deadline approaches.
Kind of discussing, did I sign it or not? I don't think I did.
I don't think you did. I think she just has it here so we can read it.
The draft is ready.
Right, okay. If we all agree, then we'll go, I'll go ahead and sign it if we all agree. Any questions for Mr. Sen?
No, it was, it was very straightforward and comprehensive and yeah, it captured what we had already...
Yeah, I just looked for the place that had Mallory on it, but...
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And we'll get that signed, Heather, Monica, I just sign it tonight and you'll...
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, I don't see, is Tim coming tonight? I don't, it says none, action items, so I, Tim? Tim? I guess Tim's not here.
Carl, to your point.
Okay, so, and it just said update items, but there's no Tim. Okay, so let's just jump into the site plan, subdivision, sign permit, review, sign presentations. Lot 6A, Twin Arch Business, Eminem Welding and Fabrication Admitted Site Plan. And Monica, take it away and just be succinct.
Just, Lindy told me not to read the whole staff report, so I won't.
You guys don't...
She warned me.
Well, I mean, we all can read.
Okay. The zoning on the property is industrial. The site acreage is one of 4.177 acres and this is a proposed use for materials storage yard. They're seeking to approve, have, seeking approval of establishment of materials, equipment storage yard along the rear portion of their lot. The site is currently utilized for their welding and fabrication business. The current built conditions of the site include 23,224 square foot building, which is utilized for the welding and fabrication. The applicant received approval in, back in February 2017 for 7,000 square foot building addition and the relocation extension of the fencing along the rear portion of the subject site. The proposed materials, equipment, storage yard will provide 49,500 square foot of impervious area. There's no site lighting on the storage yard. Landscaping, the proposed plans will be placed inside the existing fence line. Staff is recommending that the preferred planning units be installed outside of the fence for more attractive appearance. Public utilities, there are no utility upgrades or improvement in the public right-of-way associated with the project. Stormwater management comments continue to be addressed by the project engineer for review by Carroll County Bureau of Resource Management. Typically, they don't come to the planning commission before that approval is given, but the, the project will receive final approval from stormwater management before the issuance of a grading permit. So recommendation, the staff recommends the planning commission conditionally approve the second site plan amendment for lot 6A, Twin Arch Business Park for Eminem Welding and Fabricators. With the first condition, stormwater management approval must be obtained by Carroll County Bureau of Resource Management prior to the circulation of mylar's for final approval and signature and to all the other town and county agency comments are addressed.
Is the applicant here to add anything? It wouldn't be a meeting without you two.
No.
Ron Thompson, Van Mar.
We always miss you.
Here with me tonight is the applicant, Carrie Dove, from Eminem Welding. We thank the staff for advancing this forward and concur with their recommendations and look forward to your approval.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Seems very straightforward.
I do, because this affects one, another thing that we have. So, we're talking about the landscaping. When you do the landscaping, the plants are supposed to be placed outside the fence, not inside the fence. This fence was placed on the property line so as the trees could not be planted where they're supposed to be. Why was it that they were done, why was it done like that? And if, why wasn't it changed?
Well, I really don't have an answer for you, other than, since I was not involved, the contractor, when they built the addition fence because of security, because of the type of materials they store, fenced in the entire lot to ensure that all the valuable materials aren't stolen. And the fence line was put on there, so when we did the landscaping, we've got fabric on the fencing and we think that the landscaping with the density of trees will fill in, really kind of go almost through the fence by the time it's...
So you have a green fabric getting on the fences already?
I think it's going to be black fabric, yes.
It's not there yet.
No, but as part of this plan, it has, I think it's like 90% or 95% screen to hide, you know, what's going on inside. I don't mean to hide, but it really provides an additional screen.
And Ron, that fence is 10 feet high, 6 feet high?
I think it's eight foot high.
It's eight.
Ron, how, how long has, has the, the current owner, you know, been in possession of the property? And when was the fence built?
Well, I forget when the first...
That's what it says here, 2017.
Yeah, February, they got approval in February 2017 and immediately started to build the addition to the building and complete the site improvements, clearing and as well as fencing. So it's done as part of the first amended site plan.
That's the first.
No, this is the house in front of Eminem.
Okay, that's next door?
Yes, it's in front.
Okay.
The house that we have coming up is in front of Eminem.
Okay, I didn't realize they were adjacent.
Oh, yep.
Yeah, it said so in the pictures.
Yes, they are. Yep.
Any other questions for Ron or comments?
I have a question. There's the drainage.
Sir, can you, do you mind coming up to the podium then and giving your name and your address?
I'm Gary Frye and I'm, I live on 4021 Twin Arch. The drainage, there's a pond there that's going there. I just, I'm curious, has, is the pond's capacity been studied? Make sure that, because all that water that comes out of the pond comes right through my front yard.
Thank you.
What you're at, where are you located again? Please tell me.
So, I'm on the, not on the town side of Twin Arch, so...
Color of your house?
Like, big sycamore in the front yard.
Okay. That's all I needed, nothing. A real estate agent here.
The capacity of the stormwater management facility is sufficient for this addition, but in addition to that, we will be handling the complete stormwater management, two-and-a-half-inch type design runoff, so we'll be handling that all on site.
Would that be able to address his...
But the plant, more specifically, when that pond was designed, it actually included this piece of the property as part of that pond design for it.
Included his piece of property?
No, no, no. It included the piece that we're proposing as part of the second amended.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Frye's property is across the street with a pond. It drains in a channel and continues down to the stream.
Because we got, this property, there's lots seven, nine, and 11, we're all starting to get hard surfaces that are now contributing to the pond.
But again, that's what it was. That pond, that pond was designed for all of those lots that you're seeing being done up on top, for all the impervious area, it was designed for that.
Mr. Frye, have you had any problems with water?
Uh, the last storm, the, the overflow, the floods fell, so instead of a one-inch pipe that was popping water, it was half of like a six or eight-inch pipe of water that was coming through the pipe underneath the road. So it didn't flood anything, but it was a lot more water than I think it was designed.
The cap on the end of the pipe came loose, it's been reconnected. So it was, it was a maintenance issue.
I mean, we had extraordinary amount of water.
Because I had a call from Soil Conservation.
Right, and I don't know who maintains that pond, but it's...
Well, it's, it should be probably maintained if it's an industrial park.
Right, it's maintained by the Twin Arch Business Park.
Right.
I had a question about, is it possible to shift the fence up a little bit to put the trees on the outside? Have you looked at that option?
Have not, outside of the cost, but by the time you get done, you have to move the fence quite a bit for it in order to do the tree roots.
Can we kind of...
But it should have been done in the first place that way. I mean, that's...
It seems like it'd be easier for maintenance of the trees too, especially if you trim them, it would be easier if they were outside the fence rather than inside, but...
Hold that thought. We have one more gentleman.
It's easier, I think, to trim on the inside, but we'll...
We have one more gentleman who's going to do, join you, Ron?
Yeah.
Oh.
Aaron Dorsey, 4040 Twin Arch, this is my property that...
Okay, can you, sir, can you just pick it up, Mike, because everyone has to...
Aaron Dorsey, 4040 Twin Arch, I have the property in front of Eminem. And I'm fine where the fence is now, as long as those trees aren't on the outside of it. I saw where the stakes are going to be and it looked like there's outside of that fence and that fence goes directly to my property line, so I wouldn't be okay with that going into my property.
So you're saying if the fence wasn't moved and trees were put on the outside, which in effect would be on your property?
He's not okay with that.
I'm not okay with it.
No, he wants it on the inside. You're okay with the trees on the inside?
That's why you want them on the inside unless the fence is moved.
Yeah, no, I was suggesting that the fence be moved.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to cause more work for that.
If they're not on my property, they can be on the inside of the fence, it doesn't bother me one bit, there's already trees there. So I don't have to complain for that.
Thanks. I really appreciate your input.
All right. Madam Chair, just a comment, and I wish that town engineer was here. Twin Arch Business Park is a good example of essentially an infill area that continues to develop. It's primarily residential. Originally, some of the tracks were, I mean, it's primarily commercial, industrial.
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Some, some of the, of the parcels were residential, okay? Such as Mr. Dorsey's that we'll be talking with in a minute. And across Twin Arch Road, they're essentially all residential, you know, with the exception of the salvage yard and so forth. So, and we on more than one occasion have had residents come to us in a concern because of the problematic geology and water resources that we have. Their concern is as development goes forward. And it's been investigated and so forth, there's a concern, is that going to usurp some of the water capacity that we have available to us? And is that a concern? We talked with Kristi Akers, we see it over and over and over again. And I, I wish that the town engineer was here, although she could speak to it as well, that there's a lot of study and due diligence that's done before we approve any additional development, right? It's permitted. And we minimize the risk that there is going to be that possibility. But I know it's a concern and as, as we move forward with perhaps some more infill development, I think there's going to be additional concern about it. Okay, I want to speak.
I can speak a little bit to it for, from what I understand and what I know is there is already, for the development that's out there at Twin Arch Business Park, there's already water that's allocated previously for that.
Oh, there is.
So it's not like we're tapping into a new research for this development that's out there, that's going on. It's already allocated for.
Yeah, and we never do, we never do a site approval, or concept approval or site approval without, without that.
Exactly, exactly, yep.
Any other questions for Ron? Okay. And I know, I mean, that the gentleman right in front of that property is fine with the trees being on the inside, that to me is a relief. So, and, and the, I mean, I can, just the cost of moving that fence would be...
Significant.
Significant. And so, and if that gentleman's happy and we get the trees, we got, and the blocking of the fence, it seems like at least we've handled it.
We've got to be more diligent, make sure that people don't do that in the future.
That is a good point.
Because that's not the way the code reads and I don't know who, I mean, it was approved, I think, and it even says staff would have...
Preferred.
Preferred them to be on the, inside, the trees on the outside of the fence. I don't know how it got done that way.
That happened. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to essentially echo the, the staff recommendation that we conditionally approve the second site plan amendment for lot 6A, Twin Arch Business Park for Eminem Welding and Fabricators to establish a materials storage yard, but subject to the following conditions. One, that stormwater management approval is obtained from Carroll County Bureau of Resource Management prior to circulation of the mylar's for the final approval. And second, that all other town and county agency comments are also addressed.
Is there a second to this? Okay, Patty, second. All those in favor say aye? Aye. None opposed. Thank you so much. Okay, next we have, I have two sets of that one.
Madam Chairman, I did not say aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not hear that.
Thank you.
I apologize. I'm sorry, there was one nay, and that was Roxanne. I apologize, Roxanne, I didn't, I did not hear you. Did not pick that up. Okay, next we have Backacre Circle, Cedarbrook Outdoor Design Building, Change of Use Site Plan.
Right, Cedarbrook Outdoor Design Build has, they've relocated from their East Ridgeville Boulevard location to Backacre Circle. The subject location was previously utilized as a residential dwelling, but has since been vacated for the purposes of being converted to an industrial land use. So the applicant is seeking site plan approval to allow the change of use along with minor site improvements as required by the town code. The site is accessed off the drive, existing driveway off of Backacre Circle and that existing driveway grade is 17%, which is exceed, exceeds our 12% allowable maximum. So they need a waiver for that, the waiver from the zoning administrator, which is me. Staff has confirmed with the zoning administrator that a waiver is supported. The existing structure essentially located in the lot and meets all the required setbacks of the I District. Let's see, the site proposes to repurpose the existing dwelling structure. The only exterior modifications to the existing structure is the addition of a deck proposed to be located along the side elevation. Applicable adequacy of facilities, water and sewer facilities, water allocation proposal. The previous residential use of the property credited 250 gallons per day of water usage equal to one equivalent dwelling unit for the project. The applicant's water and sewer allocation application states that the proposed industrial use will only use 102 gallons per day of water. Town engineer has reviewed the application and has determined that the sufficient, there is sufficient water and sewer capacity that is available from the project, for the project from category 10 redevelopment and revitalization. Roads, town engineer has determined that no traffic analysis is required, given the low use of the property, and that the traffic impact will not increase traffic demand on Twin Arch Road at Maryland 27 by 2%. Current level of service continues to be a D. At such time, level of service degrades below a D. Future products that are not already accounted for will be required to have a traffic analysis done. Signage, a monument sign is proposed to be situated just north of the driveway. The material selections and details have not yet been provided in the site plan. The applicant will have the opportunity to address the commission as to the specifics of the proposed sign. If you remember their other sign that was on East Ridgeville Boulevard, it was a really nice sign and I'm sure they'll do something similar. Let's see, staff recommendation, staff recommendation of the application for water and sewer allocation for 102 gallons per day from the water allocation category number 10, which is redevelopment and revitalization. Staff recommends approval of the site plan to allow the change of use from residential to industrial to establish a flex industrial use on the subject site, provided that all the town and county agency comments are addressed and that material selections for the proposed monument sign is approved. It's a really low-level traffic use. They mostly go out and do sales and they do inventory and collection at the locations, so...
Is there any concern that, well, they're going to bring this, the signage to us at one point, so we can go ahead and prove this portion of it?
Right, I'm sure they'll send us a rendering, it'll be something similar to what they've had previously, but I'll let the applicant speak to that.
What they had was, yes. Hey, Ron, come on up.
Ron Thompson, Van Mar Associates, representing Mr. Mike Arson, Cedarbrook. We thank staff for their staff report. I will point out on sheet two, we showed the existing sign being...
That's what I thought of.
On the site, so it's not, we're, and actually, excuse me, that's actually, I took a picture of the sign leaning against the building, that they've taken down and we're going to put it on two white PVC posts in between. So it's not a new sign, but the one that was up here on Main Street.
It's the existing one.
It's actually, yeah, they've, it's, I saw it today, it was up, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but that's the sign, nothing new about it at all.
So I would say you could approve that, knowing that you know it looks like it's the same.
Yeah, same structure.
It's the same structure, which is nice.
Okay, so, I have a question.
Sure, Roxanne.
I'm sorry, you finished, I'm sorry. Okay, so, on the water allocation, they are, they are estimating new water use of 102 gallons a minute, so that's going to be added to the 250 that we have to come up with the 352. It's not just 102, correct?
That's, that's correct. 102 new, 352 total usage, but because we were accredited for an existing house...
Right, okay.
Within the town, it was 250 gallons.
Thanks for Roxanne for that clarification.
But I think we talked about it not being, it probably won't get to that point.
Okay, I just...
And I, I tried to...
Was confused when I looked at that.
Put it on there that existing and this, that 102 was new.
Okay.
Okay. Sir, are we okay with 352?
Yeah, there is enough water in that category for that, yes. I mean, it's, 102 gallons a minute is not a lot.
102 gallons a day additional.
A day, additional.
So the 250 is already pulled out, is already being used supposedly, so you're only pulling out 102 additional from that category.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we say.
Any more questions for Ron?
This is straightforward, too.
Yeah, really. Okay, who wants to make a recommendation?
Go ahead, Beau, you got it down. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll do it, okay. I'll do it. Okay, so what we'll propose, planning commission will take, will accept staff recommendations. The staff recommends approval of the application of the water and sewer allocation for 102 gallons per day from the water allocation category number 10, redevelopment and utilization. And we also agree with staff recommendations approval of the site plan to allow the change of use from residential to industrial to establish a flex industrial use on the budget site, provided that all town and county agency comments are addressed and the material selections of the proposed monument signage is approved. And since we understand that the signage is what they previously had, I don't think we even need that.
My second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, I got her everybody now. None approved, none, none denied, sorry. Thank, thank you so much, Ron, and look forward to seeing that. That was a pretty sign on Main, on East Ridgeville. Okay, so next what we do is we have a petition for rezoning under new business on forty forty Twin Arch Road. It's Erin Dorsey, request to rezone from residential existing to industrial, referred from the town council for recommendation, presentation from petitioner. What we're going to do here is, we are going, because we just got these packets literally Friday evening, we're going to just kind of review the materials. Staff also has not had time to really present it, you know, present anything.
And Erin has a presentation of his own, so can we allow him to actually do that?
Yes, more information is fine.
It's a lot similar to the, very similar to the ones you guys have, but I'll just talk.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone bring popcorn?
Oh, it's not that in-depth.
Okay.
Well, Erin's getting ready. Everybody knows that there's personnel changes happening, right? So Heather's transitioning to the police department, and we right now have five applicants for the planning position. We're gonna enter, we're gonna... I'm not really sure. We're trying to set up interviews with those five people right now. They're all qualified for the job, so we want to talk to every single one of them. There's one person that does live outside of town. The others four live relatively close. And we're gonna try to set those interviews up end of May, early June. I'd love to have a recommendation for hire by the July council meeting. So that's what we're shooting for. We, I spoke to Lindy about possibly not having a June meeting because we're gonna have our first open workshop for the downtown master plan in June, which is gonna be on June nineteenth. So that meeting is gonna be up at the fire hall, and we're gonna be doing flyers and doing public information for that, too. So I just wanna throw that out there as a qualifier for this, you know, processing this annexation request. So we're kind of a little bit in transition. I don't think we have anything else pressing that needs to be going to a planning commission meeting in June, and we do have that workshop. So I was hoping that we could just put our energy in that workshop in June and then have a July planning commission meeting.
What about the next item coming up? Do you have a recommendation back to the council?
We have a hundred and twenty days to do that. We don't need to do that right now.
Monica's gonna reach out for this one, have a recommendation by June twenty fifth. I mentioned that, and she's going to be reaching out to council.
Yes, our town council, I mean, our council, our legal council.
Legal council, yes, sorry.
Erin Dorsey, forty forty Twin Arch Road. And what I'm gonna show up here is not much different than what you see in your packets, and I believe you have. I just wanted to make sure nobody had any questions about it. So I submitted an application for rezoning, next slide, please. The existing land use, as you can kind of currently see, my property forty forty sits right here. It is currently residential, but a lot of the surrounding areas, Twin Arch Business Park, everything there sits as low density, industrial, I think, right now. Go to the next slide, please, Monica. Designated land use, I found this also on the town website. It's actually, my property is already purple designated to be zoned industrial. One day, I think that was part of the master plan going all the way back, as far as I can remember. So when I first purchased the property, I kind of knew what I was getting into, where I was moving. But I just wanted to kind of talk about, it's been over the last two or three years where the surrounding areas, especially behind me, have started to develop. I used to have nice views in the backyard, now I'm looking at more, you know, a little different views every day. So if you progress to the next slide, it's just some examples of that. So looking east from my property, I mean, it used to be a nice hill with the big pines and everything. Obviously, they were torn down. We have existing buildings in lot, I think that's lot seven, maybe, can't remember now. But, and then the new construction for Keller Brothers Canyon is going up now. That started late two thousand seventeen. So that's one side of it, if you continue through. I think this is next, just another image. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Hard to see in here, but this is again from a rooftop view. You see the existing building and the construction that's going up directly east of my property, and the fence that we talked about on one of the earlier agenda items is there, too. And you, next slide, please. This gives you a little idea of how close the fence is. The back of my property here, before M and M moved in, and then the fence lines right up with that property now at the back. So another reason why, you know, things are changing around me pretty frequently.
Is that a stake? What's that stake there?
That's one of the property markers right there that I think was late, late in two thousand seventeen. I believe it's a sign that's, I don't know what it says right now. But this is another just view of the back of the property now, the fence. If you go one more, I think it's the best view of how close the fence is on the property. Again, hard to see, but it's right along the back of the property there. Kind of put some errors in there to see. So, you know, as I said, I moved here and bought the house in two thousand, well, I lived in the house in two thousand three, bought it in two thousand seven, kind of knowing what was coming, kind of know what I was getting into. But now I think it's time, that's, things are drastically changing around me, so that's why I submitted a proposal for you guys.
Thank you, and thanks for your pictures, they were great.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions? Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I've got a question. Erin, what is your ultimate plan and objective for the property? And if we grant this change in zoning, what actions are you considering taking?
I'm considering relocating, actually, and letting the property be purchased in industrial to kind of fit into the current, well, the town plan that I was aware of. I don't know how soon that's gonna be, but I'd like to get that process started because just of the current nature of where I live. Year or two, maybe, I don't know.
Are there any houses next to you?
There is one on the west side of me. I don't know the address of that one, but it's about a two acre property right there, and I believe that's the only other residential on this side of the Twin Arch.
But the other side of Twin Arch is residential.
Yes.
It's all residential.
Yeah, that's not within the town.
It's not within the town, but...
Great, thank you. Well, what Heather had suggested was we have more time to review. What are you guys' feelings? I mean, it seems pretty simple. Okay, I mean, I think so, too, and rather than have this gentleman wait, and then you have to reach out to the town attorney that we could go ahead, and what do we do, do we go ahead and then just...
And it's consistent with the conference of plan, as I pointed out.
So we just approve the petition for rezoning, is that all we need to do?
Or provide a recommendation of approval.
Okay.
I mean, are there any caveats in terms of conditions or whatever?
No, I don't think so, no, at this point. Now, if Erin sells the property and then, you know, somebody wants to develop an industrial, come back to y'all. You know, you'll see a site plan on that property, just like Cedar Brook did, so.
Because it's very consistent with what's already around there, and it was previously zoned, rezoned. Industrial, so it does make sense, and why wait? Okay, who wants to make a motion?
I move that we change the zoning of forty forty Twin Arch Road to industrial, from residential existing to the industrial zone. Is that good enough, Monica?
Yeah.
Okay, Judy's second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Nancy Lee approved, thank you so much. Okay, so then the next one is a little more complicated. So here, what we were going to do was just have a presentation discussion, and there's a lot to go through on this, and where we also have a hundred and twenty days, so we'd have to make a recommendation no later than August twenty seventh, two thousand eighteen, at that eighteen, to town council. So Monica, how do you want to do this one?
Well, I know Noel Manalo's here, and he represents, he's a represent, a legal representation. If you, I didn't know if you wanted to speak to it or not.
You're welcome to. Again, we just got these packets, so we're still going through it.
No, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Commissioner King. Thank you for the opportunity, and I did understand procedurally that tonight would just be for purposes of introducing the petition. Obviously, the mayor and council did formally introduce the petition for annexation in May. So I know I've seen a lot of you before, actually on this same project, but for purposes of the record and just to, you know, to bring folks up to speed. If you don't mind, I'll go through just some of the highlights of the history of this, and then that way everyone will have context as to why we're here.
And we're trying to fix the screen right now, we're all being, we're seeing ourselves on screens.
Oh, sorry.
This is how you're going to look when you see yourself on TV. I mean, you're welcome, welcome to go, just we're trying to ignore the fact that we're seeing ourselves.
Can you say, I'm sorry, can you say who you're representing again?
Oh, sure, Noel Manalo, with Miles and Stockbridge, here on behalf of Frall Developers and the petitioners. Thank you. So again, just for procedural and historical context, we actually, Frall owns five acres, that's a part of this sort of overall twelve acres that's currently before you. And they originally petitioned the town in August of two thousand eleven to have the five acres brought in to the town. You all, the planning commission made a recommendation in November of two thousand eleven, and that was to, I believe it was to deny at the time. But then also, what ended up happening was there was a hold on the petition because the town was undergoing a revision to the master plan to conform with changes in state law. So while we went to the planning commission, we didn't get to the next steps with the petition until two thousand fifteen, when the master plan was finally updated and the various elements that related to municipal growth in the town's master plan were updated to conform to the changes in state law. So we proceeded at that point. We had the county commissioners of Carroll County gave a positive recommendation in January of two thousand sixteen. And then we proceeded towards the balance of the town's process. Went to the town council in February first of two thousand sixteen, then again in March seventh of two thousand sixteen, and then were before you all in April of two thousand sixteen. So the last time you saw sort of what I would call the earlier incarnation of this annexation was in April of two thousand sixteen. And at the time, you did make a recommendation against the annexation with specific observation that if we're going to do a petition for annexation for just this five acres, it sort of makes sense, because again, obviously, the planning justification that we were proposing as the petitioner was that your exercise in sort of eliminating enclaves as far as essentially enclave being a Carroll County property that's surrounded by property that's in the town. So the thought process and the discussion from the planning commission at the time was, well, if we're gonna go bring in the five acres, we should go ahead and, you know, wait, or try and at least make the effort to bring in the balance of the enclave, the entire enclave, that whole portion of the county property that was surrounded by town property. And so we took that, obviously, under advisement. Did we withdrew the petition such that we didn't get to the town council with that recommendation from planning commission, and obviously went back to the drawing board as far as saying, okay, well, this is clearly what the town, we've heard from the town, the planning commission, let's explore our options in terms of, you know, doing that. You know, if we're going through the exercise, like, we understand the town's logic. Let's try and get the whole enclave in. So of course, that was approximately two years ago, and so we spent the balance of the time essentially, you know, getting the lay of the land, obviously speaking with the other neighbors, because of course, we were talking about now, property that is also included in the petition that was not under control or owned by the petitioner. So we had to obviously get the participation of other property owners. So that's the process that we underwent for the intervening time until we got to the point that we had sufficient signatures on the petition to advance this, and therefore, that's what we did. So again, I think a lot of the rationale as far as the justification for the town bringing this into the, into their municipal boundary still remains. It's obviously, it's good planning to eliminate the enclaves. What we're proposing is the R two zoning, which is, you know, consistent with that area. We would be obviously providing the public infrastructure improvements that would be consistent with developing the five acres. But the five acres, of course, the improvements would be serving the balance of the enclave as well. So we're really talking about efficiency of the provision of public services, you know, the roads, the water, the sewer, public safety. And at this point, as it stands, Carroll County has to come and they do the snow removal on some portion that winds its way into the municipal boundary, sort of into the middle of it. Same now goes for if you have now your own, your own police, law enforcement. Obviously, their sort of essentially, their jurisdiction sort of surrounds this area as well. So, you know, we clearly see this as a public benefit to the town, and of course, that's what makes sense. Your master plan does show this as a future annexation area, and that's consistent with what we see in municipalities all throughout Maryland. They obviously look to their enclaves first, prior to going to sort of outside of the town boundary proper, when they're talking about growth of the area, of the municipality itself. So again, obviously, the petition has been submitted. The resolution has been drafted for the town, and they've proposed it. You know, a lot of the comments that came up in the discussion a couple of years ago related to, you know, what is the provision of public benefit? That term, it's a term of art in Maryland law, especially in regards to the annexation. What is it that is considered a benefit to the town when you're bringing this property in? And I would submit, and we're submitting to you all and to the council, the town council, that in addition to, you know, these things in terms of efficiency of planning, efficiency of services, we really find that, you know, it's been an interesting process for me personally, but certainly for the entire team, as we're working through sort of getting to know the entirety of the area. And, you know, obviously, I grew up in Frederick County, but I'm not as familiar with the history of the town. But, I mean, the fact that we're calling this area Dorsey Town and learning about sort of the property owners and the history, it's a very, I mean, it's really a rich history, and I think it is sort of an opportunity for the town to recognize part of the town and the area's history as it relates to the Dorsey family and to, I guess, the history of essentially the African Americans in this particular area. I think that, and just sort of add some detail to that, I'll have copies for everyone here. There was an article that was published in Carroll County Times, and it was actually in two thousand sixteen, so after we had already completed our sort of withdrawing the petition. And it was, it's an interesting piece about the former slave Thomas Dorsey, who was the ancestor to Grafton Nick Dorsey. And Nick Dorsey was, it was a very interesting history. He was the first known African American in the vicinity of Mount Airy to own and operate licensed businesses. Dorsey Town, the unincorporated small community on the northern edge of Mount Airy, was named in honor of the successful son of a former slave. And the ancestor, Thomas Dorsey, who was actually a slave that was born near Mount Airy in eighteen forty-four, became a blacksmith and a wheelwright, and he actually ended up becoming part of the, one of the union companies of freed slaves and fought in the war. So, you know, just the process of walking around the area and kind of getting to know the history and sort of looking into, okay, well, why is this even called Dorsetown? What are we doing here? And obviously, I think that a certain, there's a certain aspect of public benefit insofar as you can really, at this point, you know, you can ask the applicant, hey, you know, document the history of this and maybe memorialize it in some way. This would be public benefit to the town, that we have this component of history of Mount Airy that, you know, if we're annexing Dorsey Town, let's make it, you know, something that we can sort of highlight. So those are some other things that, you know, clearly, we're excited about. We, you know, it's been a long process, obviously, since two thousand eleven. You know, we obviously feel very strongly about being in the town of Mount Airy. And so that's sort of why we've pushed ahead and really knocked on the doors and tried to sort of figure out, you know, hey, let's do what the planning commission asks, see if we can get the whole twelve acres in and move forward. So with that, that's just an overview of what we're proposing again, and happy to answer any questions, and I look forward to the continued discussion. Obviously, we'll be back, I believe, in a subsequent meeting prior to your recommendation to the council.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, so it seems like there's nine people with ownership interest, but there's not nine signed petitions. So can you tell us a little bit about the folks who chose not to participate in wanting to do that?
Yeah, so again, that gap in time for the two years, we, you know, I did everything from, as you can imagine, from, you know, obviously, starting with the correspondence and then coming up to the town pretty much every other weekend for a good while and just sort of knocking on doors. And, you know, there were some folks that just weren't interested, but I'll be honest, the majority of the resident residents that, you know, we didn't, that you don't see showing up there, I just didn't get any responses, either from, you know, certified mail, other forms of contact, maybe just not coming to the door. They see, you know, I've been coming, I have my Miles and Stockbridge polo shirt on, so it didn't look like some, you know, just some random person showing up at the door on a Saturday afternoon. so I didn't look like some, you know, just some random person showing up at the door on a Saturday afternoon. But, you know, clearly, at a certain point, you know, we ascertained, okay, we're not gonna, we could spend a while, and there might even be turnover in ownership of residents. At a certain point in time, we were able to see, okay, we have between the property owners and residents, you know, sufficient to meet the minimum requirement, so let's go ahead and come in with the petition.
I just live right in, outside of Dorsey Town, right on Main Street. And there's been a couple neighbors who have said they don't want that.
Gotcha.
And I don't, when I ask, what's the intent behind it, and they're just like, no, we're not part of Mount Airy, we're part of Dorsey Town, and we don't want to give that up, so.
And I've heard again, that's heard the history, that in the history of it, there's certainly a sentiment that's been articulated in the past, certainly.
Yeah.
Noel, can we kind of address Ellis Road a little bit?
Sure.
Granted, you can't go down Ellis Road unless you have a four-wheel drive vehicle, which I stopped right at the beginning of it. But from my understanding, the people that front, whose property backs to Ellis Road, part of their property goes to the middle of that road, is that correct?
I would have to double check on the survey.
I think that's correct.
But that is a typical, I think that's a typical in Maryland where you have ownership to the center.
So they go to the first half, and then the person on the other side comes to the middle with their half. So you're saying that your petitioner, are they willing to upgrade this road to the standards of the town of Mount Airy?
The, now, are you talking about the entire length of Ellis Road? I would have to double check with the client as far as what portion, you know, whether it's the entire length or whether it's a certain amount. Certainly, the road improvements are, would obviously be contemplated for this area. And I just, if you all, as the Planning Commission, were reviewing a plan that would require that, then have it be a condition, then obviously, you know, that would be the condition of approval.
And he's, and those people that have approved, or you've talked to, they understand that they would need to hook to the water and sewer?
Yes, if, clearly, you know, our communications with the folks that have petitioned is, if you're going to have services provided by the town, then, you know, that's everything that's involved, which includes hooking up and paying the, you know, the fees and applicable regulations.
Well, per the actual maps, it looks like there's 18, 19 parcels in all. Roughly half of those, maybe seven or eight as opposed to eight or nine, front on Ellis Road as opposed to Main Street, which is a state highway. Technically, belongs to the state, we haven't taken it over. So there's an inconsistency in terms of quality of road, in terms of quality of access, in terms of frontage, and all of those issues. So I understand you to say that the petitioners at this point, and it is a percentage more than the 25% requirement, are saying they do favor an annexation. They do prefer to no longer be separate and to be part of Mount Airy. But where, there isn't enough interest on the other side of the argument that we've heard from those folks.
Well, again, so when we came in, when we came in originally, we were the 100% owners of the area to be annexed, and your comment to us was, we'll get the whole thing in. The state law, Maryland law, obviously, has provisions for annexation. So there's a minimum requirement for purposes of filing the petition, sufficient under Maryland law. At that point, if the town were to adopt it, there's clearly provisions that would, you know, allow for a referendum on the petition. And the, you know, very generally, what they can involve is essentially either a referendum of those that are in the area to be annexed, or the entire municipality. And depending on which way the, I guess it would be the petitioners for the referendum, depending on what they would want to pursue, that drives sort of the requirements. So if I'm only going, if I wanted to petition the, or if I wanted to bring to referendum the annexation, and I only wanted those people within the area to be annexed, there's certain requirements I need to meet in terms of signatures. If I wanted to bring it to the entire town, then there's obviously another set of requirements. So, you know, again, obviously, the state law contemplates that you're going to never have a 100% unanimity in, I mean, land use is one area, but certainly other areas under Maryland law, there's an acknowledgement that 100% unanimity is going to be a near impossibility, if not an entire impossibility. And so, the way the code's drafted, you know, again, it's a democratic process. So by virtue of the elected officials accepting the petition, there is a set process where, okay, if there is, you know, our citizens that, or actually, residents that don't want to become citizens, then there's a way to, you know, bring that to a vote. So I guess it's a long way of saying, we understand, you know, that there's varying views, as there always are. So we're just following the process, and if those varying views need to be, I guess, resolved, there are provisions in state law to allow for it.
Right.
I'm sorry, so what you're, because this is education for me, so. So if it comes to a vote, and we say, yes, we'll annex it, and everything, all the addresses that you included in that map would have to be annexed, and whether they wanted to or not, if that's the decision.
That's correct. If you would recommend, if you were to recommend to the commissioners, hey, you know, let's bring this into the town, then the entire boundary as outlined would become part of the, would be proposed to become part of the town. And before that's official, there's a period of time in which folks that might not like that idea can, you know.
Well, and that's exactly what would be educational for us, would be able to hear the diversity of opinion, both from the property owners as well as for residents of the town outside.
Right, and are your clients aware that there's a filing fee? And I remember, we've had a petition in years past, remember, a lot of the residents were not aware that there were fees associated, that they were required to pay.
Right, no, it's obviously, again, we've spent the last two years sort of getting the thing together, and, you know, for purposes of coming back responsive to your request or your observation that, well, we should take the whole thing, and if we're going to take any of it at all. So, you know, again, it's, we benefit from, I think that the state of Maryland has a very, you know, well-defined process for municipalities to grow, and it's benefited from, you know, a lot of years in terms of, obviously, originally, it was the Article, you know, Article 66B. Now it's in land use, you know, volume of the annotated code. But very well-developed case law and application, so it's a process that, you know, both on the, well, three sides. Municipal side, the petitioner's side, and, you know, the citizenry, there's ample process.
Thank you, any other questions?
I don't have any right now. If, they're all comments, I think, from people.
Wait, can I just have one question then before, and then you can come up to the podium? Okay, so I'm just a little confused, I'm new at this too.
Sure.
I don't think we annexed any.
No, we started it a long time ago.
Okay, so if they have to hook up to our water and sewer.
At their expense.
Mm-hmm. It would be at each individual homeowner's expense?
Yes.
Yeah, the town does not pay.
The town does not pay.
And then the street, if that were to be brought up to our standards?
Have to be paid by the residents. If the developer, generally, in an annexation, the developer has all the lots. So the mediation of the road, the developer takes care of, but it is then, it's then passed on because there's not properties, existing properties there. This has existing properties in it, and I don't think the developer is going to want. Ellis Road goes in and it does come out. There is, right next to one of the, it's not identified when it comes back out, but it is like a circle that goes in there. But if you went down that road, you would stop right before you started down the road, because it is not, you cannot drive a car down there right now. So that's going to take a lot of mediation to get it up to standard.
Okay, so if that's the reality, that they could be responsible for those expenses, is it possible to approximate so they are aware of what those costs would be?
You're asking Rachel that? I thought you were looking at Rachel that.
Yeah, I mean, do we know for a fact that, I mean, clearly, that should be part of this process.
Well, as far as hookups and stuff like that, there's a defined amount, and, yeah, I don't know them off the top of my head, but I know Ronnie does.
But I understand, but I mean, that needs to be shared with those residents, so they're aware.
And actually, if I might, in further response to your question, Commissioner, that one of the properties, it's, one of the properties that were included in the petition, it's actually already connected to the town order, but it's still in the county, and that's because of failure, you know, with failure of wells. So by MDE order, essentially, the town is, was required to hook it up. They don't get the benefit of any of the, you know, your typical hookup fees. So one of the things we were discussing, obviously, with the residents is, as time progressed, is clearly within this particular sort of water table, I mean, and again, from a town planning perspective, I think you would want to look at this and say, okay, you know, are we going to have to continually revisit this with MDE for additional properties, and essentially continue to hook up county property, or town facilities?
Thank you. Ma'am, do you want to come up and give your name and address? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Noel, if you have questions, we may not, you know, have all the answers right now, but at least to your comments.
I'm pretty, I'm Carrie Sell, 1307 Ellis Road. So my property would be, I'm the one, one of the people that opposed this.
Okay.
And.
Thank you for speaking. Thank you for speaking, then.
Thank you for having me. I'd have heard about some of the costs, but I was not made aware of them. The only reason I heard of the costs is I went on the internet and dug up some previous petitions, and that's how I learned of them. Nothing was explained to me about the cost of $18,400 just for the permit for one household. And the only reason I heard about the cost of us paying for the road repair was through the Frederick Post. He was at my door, but none of that was explained to me. And I don't have 18, I don't have that kind of money, there's no way I could. My house, my property does go to the middle of the road, that you were asking about that. My property goes to the middle of the road.
What was your address again, I'm sorry?
I'm 1307 Ellis.
I've never been down that road, and I.
I have four-wheel drive.
Yeah.
And I like the privacy, to be honest, you know, that's why we took that house.
Okay.
And just let me, so I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, the man in red.
Bill.
Bill. You were asking, or you brought up people being made aware. From what I know, people are not made aware of the costs involved, and I would think they're uneducated in signing this petition. And I think before you even consider the petition, that they should have it in writing, the costs involved, so they know what they're getting themselves into. It's not fair, I mean, like, when I say I'm going to get something, I probably assume it's going to be a couple hundred dollars, like hookup fees, but when you hear 18,000, that's like, whoa. I don't know if they really do know what they're getting into. And it's unfair for that.
And we would have, obviously, a public hearing, and they're also, they put sign, place cards out, I mean, huge signs out too, so it's not like this would go unnoticed. I mean, they would put this big yellow or green signs out for public, even for a public hearing. So, yeah, but again, having people.
No one goes down that road to see those signs.
Well, the residents down, you're right, I couldn't make it down that road.
I'll call you one day, and I want, and you can come get me and take me down there on your four-wheel drive.
That, that's fine. But I don't know what would happen to me in my home if I had to be forced with those costs. I could probably lose my home. My husband had shoulder replacement surgery a couple of years ago, he's lost half his salary. We're struggling, and for me to have this other cost thrown at me, my son's going to graduate in high school in two years, I could use that money for him to go to college, and to be honest, I'm frustrated. I'd rather them do the five acres and leave the rest of the 12 acres out.
I see what you're saying. Now, if you'd be so kind, I don't know how close you are to your neighbors, I know you said you liked the privacy and everything, but, you know, talk to them and make them aware of what the situation is as far as, you know, that there's going to be in cost, there's going to be costs that would be incurred. But also, we would, you know.
We'd love to hear from them.
Yeah, we would love to hear from everyone, for and against. But just be aware that we really work and strive to make sure that the information is readily available for people. So, you know, have them come to the Planning Commission meeting so they can hear firsthand what is happening, and just try to get that information out, because, you know, you could be correct. They may not be aware of additional costs, so.
Right, that sounds like a job for me. I already work full-time.
They'll be sent letters.
I appreciate what you're saying.
When we do that.
Yeah, we'll be, but I mean, if you do happen to run into a neighbor at Safeway or whatever, I mean, don't, you know, you don't have to make it your, another job.
Yeah, we're not assigning you this task, please.
If you run into people.
Why, want to walk the dog or whatever?
Yeah, for sure, if you see somebody, just say, hey, you know, just so you're interested, it's just so you know what's going on.
Well, the other question is, I thought, are the properties that are on North Main Street in front of Ellis Road, I thought they were already, they're not hooked into the public water, they're on wells?
Not, not the ones that are in Dorsey Town, no, they all have wells.
Except for the one person who paid on Ellis Road to be hooked in. Everybody else has wells.
Right, correct.
Yeah.
Now, one property was an MDE.
It was mandated, it was, I think it was, if I'm not mistaken, the address is 808. Is it 808? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, you're here? Do you want to come up and speak?
Let's go ahead and get a more people, and then you can kind of get everything at once.
Can I propose the petition be reissued with more education on it, so people know what they're getting into? I mean, instead of just assuming they read street signs and stuff?
Well, Monica, what's it, well.
Right, we don't, and this is, this came to us, and right now, we just want to hear your comments.
Yeah, we're not doing the petition.
Yeah, the petition has to be said to the council, and the council has recommended that we come back to them and recommend or not recommend annexation. I would like to, like, attack, ask the planning person to put together the list of things that they would need, the fees that they would be paying, so that if anybody has any questions, they can come here to town hall and pick those up and see what it is. Because it's, I think it's going to be different for each person, because there's this, because of the hookup, it goes by foot, Rachel, if I'm not mistaken, the hookup, or they are all?
The hookup themselves, I think, yeah. I don't want to misspeak, but that's a cost, and that cost is not the cost of what it would take the construction company to come in and actually run the plumber, that's a different cost.
That's, okay, so we need to have a list of everything that they could possibly come and be incurred, any fee that they have to incur to get this.
Some of those would.
You probably already have them?
I'm making a list of what you're saying.
Okay, great, thank you.
But just for clarification, some of them might be, you know, depending on the construction company you get to actually do the work, there might be variations.
Right, you're going to have to ballpark that a little bit, but that's fine.
I see, I see you, please just wait a minute, let Roxanne speak, okay? So Rachel, you're making a list of fees, ma'am, is anything else you want to add?
Yeah, can I get it emailed, those fees, so I can try to, I can try to help spread the word? I mean, I think you should be absolutely clear. People know what they're getting into, and, I mean, when it comes to 18, I already know it's a minimum of 18,400, that's just for one household permit alone, plus the hookup, plus the cost of Ellis Road. You know, and it's going to be a shame for some, maybe some of those people who don't get out of the house and don't pay attention to those signs, and just, some people are just not in touch with what's going on around them, and then all of a sudden, they're. and then, all of a sudden, they're being told they have six months to come up with this money.
Thank you, thank you. I think the lady in orange was next, and then the lady in pink, and then the lady in paisley. Oh, yes, actually, if you want to make a queue, right, at the podium, that'd be great, too, but in the order. This lady first, lady in pink next, and then the next lady.
I'm up on South Main Street.
Okay, can you?
I'm up on South Main Street, so I don't have anything to do with this property. I'm just listening to the education, and the young, I guess he's a lawyer. Even if you tried to bring these people in, I think it's gonna be very difficult if they wouldn't answer their door. I don't see, I don't know what the builder has said that he'll pay for, but I don't think this would be a problem if the builder took on the cost. This was our problem before. How many years ago did this come up before? And Dorsey Town would not be annexed because of the extreme cost. You can't expect, I would not want to put out twenty-five thousand dollars to hook myself up to Mount Airy. What am I getting out of it? A water bill? A pavement bill? An electric bill? So, that twenty-five thousand is gonna grow every year. I don't see why the developer doesn't pay to have this done. Then, I possibly could afford my water bill. I possibly could afford my electric bill. The town will pay to have the streets cleaned, I'm assuming, since it'll be a town street. So, I mean, they pay for my street, but I'm a state street. So, you know, it's unrealistic. And I tried tonight because I read this in the paper, and I'm thinking, again, we're going through this? Why isn't the builder stepping up and saying, I want to put on these, how many houses? Excuse me, sir, how many houses is the building gonna put on? Two to four houses?
It's all two zoning, it's five acres, they are...
So, how many houses totally are you maybe putting up?
Two to four.
How confused. All that property is only gonna have two houses on it? There's some, well, you know, there's some existing houses. This is just a partial part of the annexation, of the property that's vacant. Well, I guess that you go back to the builder to step up before it's brought out. You can't expect uneducated people, I'm not saying they're educated or not educated, uneducated people about this. The fees. Right, not in their education.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it.
I agree, thank you.
And don't worry, I'm gonna let you respond. Let's go ahead and get everyone, and then they just respond at once, and then it'll kind of sum it all up. And your address and your name, ma'am?
Good evening, my name is Nia Yabula. I live at sixteen eleven Rising Ridge Road in Mount Airy, Maryland, within the town limits, but I'm speaking on behalf of my grandmother, Mitch Thomas, who lives at twelve ten North Main Street in Mount Airy. Her property goes from North Main Street to Ellis Road. I'm reading in the Frederick News Post that we're concerned with the cost, that the people would have to take on that cost. She's an elderly person on a fixed income. That's a great burden. Also, hooking up to the town water sewer, she has well water, doesn't have a problem, has lived there for fifty years without an issue. It's just really an undue burden. And I think it's important that we educate everybody in the community for the cost, because that's a great expense. And that's not gonna be passed on to a developer. If you're buying a house like we did, that was all passed on to us within that. That's not the case here. I think it's a very sad situation that this keeps coming up, and every time it comes up, the cost is greater and greater each time. I also have a letter I'd just like to submit on her behalf, just laying out the issues that we have and the objection. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you're finished, we'll have the next lady come up.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sherry Bensky. I live at thirteen oh five Scotch Heather Avenue, which backs up to the triangular parcel of land that Forall Development owns. There seem to be five parcels that Forall Developers bought in two thousand and ten, and they wanted changed from the county zoning of one house per acre to, or two, if they get annexed into town, to put two houses on each acre. So, how many houses are they thinking of, that they would build if it was annexed?
Two to four, but...
The density obviously will allow certain amount, but the geography and all...
Right.
And they have to perk, right?
Right. It's raw land.
So, the existing houses that are in Dorsey Town, who don't have a problem with their well, you know, their water from their well, they haven't run dry or whatever, would they be obligated to hook in, or would that be a choice?
They'd have to.
They'd have to.
To be in the town, you have to be on the town water.
Okay, so then, besides their state taxes, they would also have to pay the town tax in addition to it. They would have to pay the quarterly water bill, which, my husband and I live in the house, just the two of us, and our water bill is about hundred forty, hundred fifty dollars a quarter. It's not, it's not inexpensive, the water in Mount Airy. So, I just wanted to bring up those points.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Does anyone else would like to speak? Come on up, please. And if you don't mind, not, to not repeat what's already been, if you can bring up a new point, that would be great.
Yes, my name's Charles Kimow. I live at thirteen ten Main Street. Well, my issue is, back when I bought my house eight years ago, I couldn't hook up the city water. Okay? So, I had to spend twenty-five thousand dollars to put a new well in, ten thousand dollars to put a new septic system in. So, you're thirty-five thousand dollars, and now this man's gonna come here and tell me that I gotta hook up to city water with this expense that I've already put out? I don't think it's right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, anyone else would like to come up and speak? And again, just, if you can bring up a new point, that would be great.
It's been a while since I've been up here.
Welcome back.
So, I do want...
Your name and your address. We know you, but the rest of the Washington home don't.
Eight oh eight Ellis Road, and I'm happy to discuss the cost since we worked on a property that did get hooked up. One thing I do want to mention, we were one of the properties that did sign this, and I'm admitting that with full disclosure, because we were considering, since we already had water, that we could get sewer at the same time, and we're considering selling our property. It seemed like the best kind of decision to be able to offer that for resale value. That being said, also understanding now, the cost of the property owners being responsible for the road potentially, and there not being transparency around the cost of, let's see, the service to be extended, the, of the eighteen thousand four hundred dollars, we already paid the seventeen thousand six hundred for water. So, being able to have a better sense of those costs, especially for somebody who's already spent, all of a sudden done close to a fifth of what our house was worth when we bought it, on getting hooked up. The transparency around the cost going into it is something that has me regretting the fact that I signed this. And I, it's a challenge to kind of hear, not just the cost that potentially I could stack on top of this, but also for my neighbors, too. Like, it's simply not something that we had the transparency for.
Okay, thank you so much. You do not have the sewer, you just have water?
Do not have sewer, just have water. And as far as, like, contractor costs for just running the line, it was like ten thousand dollars to get it to our house. Sorry?
It did not have to go very far.
We had to actually go down the state maintained portion of Ellis Road, so it was four hundred feet. Yeah.
So, how much was your total cost?
Our total cost for the entire ordeal, or for...
For water.
For water, our, we spent almost fifty thousand dollars.
Wow.
Over the course of three years. That included legal fees and everything to try to get it, but, but we spent a significant amount of money. I mean, if we were just to look at the cost of the permit plus the construction, that would have been close to thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you. As promised, sir?
Thanks, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity. And again, just to clarify for the record, road improvement costs, obviously, if you are the applicants with a site plan coming in, and my client was proposing construction of new dwellings, clearly, road improvements and other sort of infrastructure improvements that would be serving neighboring properties, you know, the town, the town by regulation can't tag somebody on that just by virtue of them being in the town. In other words, if you talk about an existing property in the town, say, a vacant piece of property, and you're adjacent to, you know, existing property owners, and this person is bringing in, the applicant is bringing in a plan, and the regulations require road improvements going through the balance, they're the ones that are gonna be responsible for that cost. So, you know, again, I understand wanting to get a handle on sort of the universe of costs, potential costs, but if someone, you know, we're not wanting to participate in an application for a development, which, again, it would only be the unimproved property, they're not going to bear those costs. And again, I think the evidence that you've seen as far as what it's costly to individual homeowners to sort of remedy situations, I think just sort of underlines the point that, you know, in terms of public benefit, if we have now a developer that's coming in, and, you know, again, per your sort of observation and request, say, well, you know, you gotta take a crack at the whole area, not just your five acres, you're only taking care of yourself. My client clearly is understanding, look, you know, he's in the development business, and he understands that when you want to bring property in to, you know, improve it and add to the town, then the town is gonna look to you to, you know, sort of help with existing situations. So, it's a good, you know, it's a good exercise for the town to understand, do we just sort of let conditions exist where MDE or other residents in the county are going to have to undergo all these costs eventually as time progresses, maybe past your time, maybe past my time, but again, as the town fathers and elders would consider their role. Is there a public benefit now to somebody stepping up that's in this business, that understands the costs, that understands that in the process of applying for a plan, there are obviously certain improvements that need to be made that aren't just benefiting the new units, that they're going to have to sort of serve the balance of the area. And in this instance, it would be, obviously, now, the entire enclave. And I think that's, I mean, that's why, that's why folks get into the business, really. I mean, we're talking about improving communities for the future, not sort of trying to acknowledge, you know, failing conditions now and just let them, let them sort of exist. I mean, yeah, everyone, for the last three or four years, has been referencing the, you know, this sort of trail, basically. And, yeah, ultimately, you know, it's, as long as we're driving cars, and as long as people are, that's how they're getting to and from work, and as long as people are living there, it'd be nice to have an improved road. Well, maybe this is the opportunity. If this property were to annex, and someone were to come forward with a plan, then clearly, that would be something I would anticipate that you all, actually, it falls within your jurisdiction, that you would be looking to improvements. And that's, again, that's sort of why it's difficult to sort of quantify costs in that regard. Schedule of fees aside, we're talking now about development costs. So, if I'm, you know, if I was, if my client were to be developing property, and they put in a plan, and conditions required, now you must improve, you know, Ellis Road from, you know, the frontage of your property all the way down to such and such intersection, connect, you know, through along the line in that same length, that's a condition of their approval. It's not binding on any other, the town at that point, you can't go to each of the properties, not gonna there say, hey, they've got an application in, since this is gonna be able to serve your property, you know, the road or the utility, you have to pay, too. That's just not how it works. So, again, I think when you referenced earlier, the property owners, obviously, if they're, the petitioners, you know, understand that, you know, there's a process, and you can certainly ask for conditions at the appropriate time for the improvements. This is just the first step. You know, we've obviously made it our, we've done our level best to do what you had asked two years ago, and that's explore, or actually, bring forward the petition for the entire enclave. So, again, I appreciate hearing all sides, because we're, this is the business. We're talking about, you know, developing communities, and so that's kind of what the ultimate goal is.
I have a question for you. Since your petitioner wants this annexed, what is his plan for this?
A single-family residential on the, on the five acres.
Okay, so he's, he is gonna develop it?
If afforded the opportunity in the town. I mean, they, you know, we, obviously, there's a potential to pursue doing so under Carroll County regulations, but again, just, again, the business we're in, it just makes more sense. We're proximate to the water lines, there's opportunity.
Okay, can I ask a question? Because I've been listening to you, but I'm more confused, I think, than before you started talking. Before, when you came to us and you were trying to get the annexation of the five acres, did you explore doing separate wells on those properties?
So, the original annexation in two thousand and eleven, I was not involved with. And clearly, you know, the cost benefit was such that, at the time, that it probably, it made more sense, you know, economically, to pursue, you know, annexation and connection. I don't know what, I can't speak from personal experience as to what was, you know, part of the analysis from, for purposes of developing in the county. I know that's one, once I was retained, that was sort of already, the decision already been made. Assuming, I'm assuming that there probably was some sort of analysis done to develop in the, under Carroll County regulations, and it seemed like it was worth the effort at the time to pursue coming into the town.
Okay, well, just from what I'm hearing tonight, I would say that as, from a developer's standpoint, if you're only going to put two to four houses on five acres, it's not going to make any sense for that developer to put too much money into the pot for any of these, you know, upgrades that need to be done. And that the burden is falling on the individuals who are now living on the, is it twelve acres or the seven acres? Whatever.
The remaining acreage.
The remaining acreage, okay. The burden's gonna fall on them. And yes, it's, you know, it's great for a developer to be improving the community, but not at the expense of existing homeowners. So, my suggestion would be to, before we go down this path, it might be good to take another look to see if he truly wants to develop that land, to see if it makes more sense to put individual wells on those properties, because it just, just from what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing tonight, economically, it's not going to make sense for the developer or the people that are existing there now. But that's just my opinion.
I mean, that's certainly, you know, it's not my sort of pro forma. I'm hired by the person doing the pro forma and bringing the legal case. And again, just for the record, you know, costs to be imposed by the town on existing residents, I think is a different bucket, if you will, than what an applicant, the developer, that's developing the property, that would be required to do the improvements. Day one, when property's annexed, you're not automatically, you know, turning your well off and going to the town and hooking up to town water. And the charges that would be assessed, obviously, are driven on hookup. So, again, it's, and the road improvements, again, it's not, I guess, just again, to underline the point that there is a, there has to be some precision in terms of how you're, when you couch the term of the existing residents and the costs that they would bear, if any, versus what sort of someone's proposing new development would in the way of road improvements, improved infrastructure, any other requirements that the council would condition the annexation on, or the planning commission would condition an approval of the plan on. Because again, if we annexed, the next plan you would see would be for five acres. We would be the applicant. Any condition that you all would impose legally would be on the applicant. It wouldn't be on, you know, anyone else.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Monica, what's next? We have a bunch of questions to be answered. We...
I think Rachel and I will get together and we'll make a list of associated fees so we can kind of get an idea and send that out to everybody, and then I'll get back to you.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We're gonna continue this.
Right, yeah, this is, this is just the top of the...
Last one question?
Of course.
I want to make sure that we get everybody's email address and contact information on that sign and sheet back there, please. Okay, Mrs. Shakora, we, we have...
With your address.
We're good, we're good people. So, um, you know, we, we want to do this right, even after the discussion. So please put your contact information on it, so we can get in touch with you.
And it'll also be mailed, certified mailed, but, yeah, make sure, if we have an email address, that's even better.
Right.
They got email on Ellis Road, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so this is just the beginning, there's a process here, and we want to make the entire community aware. Okay? Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah, sorry, you have to go, because that's, it's being taped, and people can't hear you. I'm sure we have tons of people watching.
Um, I don't know if this seems like a silly question, but since my property goes to the middle of the road, if they actually were to repave that road, would I be losing a piece of my property?
That's a question that we have.
You would have an improvement to it.
But, I mean, it's on my property, shouldn't I have a parking space and...
Normally, it's dedicated, if, if it becomes a public street, normally, that section of land would be dedicated to public right. So, yes, you would lose it.
You would lose it.
So I wouldn't have less land.
That's correct. My yard, I'm on Lookout Avenue, part of my yard is in, is in the middle of the road.
I can lower the value of my home, which is another cost. I was just putting that out there, thank you.
You could, you could lose acreage and, and have to pay more.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, deep breath, everyone. So we know we've got a lot ahead of us, and, again, do please put your email, your phone number, your, your contact information in the, back there, sign and sheet. Um, okay, going on to unfinished business, the 2018 Planning Commission Work Plan and Goals, uh, the Master Plan Implementation and Priorization of Goals. As Monica mentioned, um, we're going to have that workshop for...
Tuesday, June 19th, for downtown master plan.
And it's...
I think we're going to start at 6:30, probably go to 9:30.
Okay, that's changed.
Because what's going to happen is there's, I think Melina is going to present some marketing information to everyone, and then we're going to break out into groups, into work tables, and we're going to be doing some interactive exercises.
And this is like a must-attend, must, I'm, you've never seen my husband here at these meetings, I'm dragging him to that meeting, because I'm tired of hearing him complain. We're trying for the confinement hall.
At the, um, fire hall, at the, um, Activities Building?
Activities Building.
What do they call it now? It's the reception hall.
They call it the reception hall.
Reception hall.
This is a must-attend, it's going to be interactive, they're going to be, there's a, and they did a quick, um, list, I don't have it. But, you know, it's going to be a 15-minute, well, like, what, what we're going to do this evening, then the introduction, then a breakout into, uh, groups where you can tackle stuff, and then actually, a little, but it's going to be a place where you put a button, put your address on the board, so they can see, you know, the participants, where the, you know, who's in the room where they live.
And also, um, it's, it's, we're going to have a kids' activity area, so it's very important that we're going to get some, you know, materials together, so don't be afraid to come if you have little kids, because we're going to have an area that they'll be...
Or, or your teenagers.
Entertained with, yeah.
You know, because they, they live here, too. So this is really, really a must-attend. And Bob, did you want to add anything?
Yes, um, we had a steering committee meeting, oh, a week ago or so, and these people are dead on, okay? They have, they, they know this town like the back of their hand, only after a couple weeks, and I was shocked. Um, they refer to our downtown as fractured, they use the word fractured, and that's the best description I've heard of it ever. They are sharp. Um, you know, come and, and put your two hands down.
Yeah, they had a lot...
It's really important they have a way of incorporating everything into the final product.
They, they did maps, and they, they layered maps, and it was just amazing, when you started putting, taking, you know, the map for, you know, existing residents, the map for existing businesses, the map for walkability and roads, and started putting them together, like, oh, there's a reason why that's empty over there.
And the marketing information also pointed out some highlights, like, we have a huge amount of homeownership here, we have a really high income level in Mount Airy. And also, our schools are rated astronomically high. Our schools are rated higher than Fairfax County, if you can believe that.
Really?
Yeah, yes, well...
Yeah, it's amazing, our, our schools are rated incredibly high here.
Yeah, if you go Great School, if you go, it's called greatschools.com, they have ratings of the schools, one to 10, you can see.
So that, that was amazing, it was really a cram, it was an hour long, and it was filled, I left my head like...
I think everybody left in awe.
Yes.
Yeah, we definitely were.
Why if it was sponsored, everybody was, I can't believe, that's us.
And they will be, they are in the process of getting everything linked to our website, is that correct, Monica?
Yeah, I think they're, they're about, we're really close to launching the website just for the project.
Yeah, it's, it's mind-boggling about the, the real estate stuff, because she sent it to me to, to verify some of it. It'll blow your mind.
Yeah. Lyndia, the other aspect of the Master Plan Implementation and Goals is that the, the dialogue and coordination with the other commissions continues in terms of recognition and reinforcement of their goals that they helped set, and now we're all involved in implementing those goals. We're halfway to the next master plan update. It's, 2018 is five years since we finished the last one. In five more years, it'll be time to do it again. So that's why the implementation's so important.
And hopefully, it'll be easier, because, because when we started the master plan in 13, we didn't have any, remember, there was nothing followed through on the previous one? So at least we have something.
And recreate, that's what I took for you.
I have a question, and since you were here. We were talking about the procedures, the rules and the procedures, and I had sent out what the, uh, the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association had put together, and I think we were going to try to talk about that this evening. But one of the things that Leslie and I were talking about is, and I know that Heather's been talking to Tom, it might not be a bad idea if our attorney, town attorney, was here, because I have some legal questions.
The reason why, the reason why it wasn't on the agenda is because, yes, Tom is still working on it, that's, we hadn't forgotten about it, literally, no.
Okay, I didn't know if that was one of the, you know, and that's okay.
Yeah, it was that Tom is still involved, and so, did you bring your questions? And, and Leslie was going to be here, it was just for, for work, she was not, but so it is on, it's on the next agenda.
Next, okay, awesome.
Which will be July.
July.
Which will be July 30th.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just checked.
So, and, and I am sorry I missed that meeting, but it couldn't be helped.
That's okay, that, yeah, it's the 30th.
Okay. So, um, so we talked about downtown master plan, so next Planning Commission meeting, as you heard, we won't, the, the June meeting will be this workshop in lieu of, and so...
We're not going to have that one.
Right, we're not going to have the June 25th meeting, we're going to have a meeting in July? And it's July...
It's the last Monday in July is the 30th.
Okay. I don't see the zoning administrative report, but that might be, just because I don't see it, but, or maybe it's...
I'll get the territory.
Okay, it'll come, Bob, jump in.
I just want to jump in and remind everybody about the farmer's market, every Wednesday, except for July the 4th. But every Wednesday, um, in the, in the rail yard, 3:00 to 7:00, great, it's a great year for the farmer's market.
How, how's the parking? Because I'm going to bring Margaret Ann Fritz, and she's a little old lady, and...
Um, it's, the parking was, was easy.
Okay.
You know, the last, the last, so last week was the first one, 16.
I will be there this coming Wednesday.
Downtown Master Plan Steering Committee, we all went over that, and Saturday's a chili cook-off. Please come and make this demo successful chili cook-off we've ever had.
And the train station's almost finished, Doc's sitting back there, but the train, the new train station renovation's almost finished, and it's beautiful.
I've been getting pictures and emails from the store, they'll say...
If you haven't been in there, it's, it's, you'll be like...
Can't wait.
And a real quickie, since we were talking about roads earlier, the, in the, um, Maryland House of Representatives and the Senate, they voted unanimously to re, to reestablish this program of HUR, which I will use the revenue.
Yeah.
It means about $100,000 to Mount Airy.
Yeah.
Forty mon, $49 million in the pot every year for the next five years to be divided among all the counties and municipalities. That's what repairs our roads, that's what we haven't had for about 10 years now. And it's coming back, the five-year program, so it'll be on the docket again in five years.
Great.
All right? And that's it.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn at 8:40?
I motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Okay, so Patty, and then Roxanne, and then Bill second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much for attending, and we really appreciate your input.